I have a motion to accept the additional staffing requests from the Athletic Department. By Stacy. Second. Second by Dan. Any questions about this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero.
All right, and then lastly, this evening we have a resolution that we bring to the board annually, and this is a resolution to direct the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and the reasons therefore. So, this is something that we need to do annually in case there is a need for any reductions in our certified staffing. And this isn't a year where we're considering budget reductions, but that doesn't mean that there can't possibly be some staffing issues that we would need to address within a program. And so, we want to make sure that this resolution is on the books.
Okay. I have a motion to accept the resolution for adjustments in curriculum programs and staffing for 2013, 2014. By Chad?
Second. Second.
By Dan. Any questions about this? And this is a formal item that we come through every year. All those in favor? Actually, I think this will call.
Aye.
Chad? Rich? Aye. Lee?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aye, Dan?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries seven zero. Move on to new business. We have the technology update.
No? Okay. Ben, come on up. Members of the board, Dr. Grover. Good evening. My name is Marcus Malazo. I'm the District Technology Coordinator.
I'm Corey Sukup, District Integration Specialist.
Ben Tressel, Staff Development Coordinator.
And we are here tonight to give you an update on our iPad integration. Just a brief overview on the iPad technology resources. Three bullet points here, and they deal with infrastructure, iPad deployment, and technical support. As part of our essential conditions that you've heard us speak to and talk about many, many times, we had deployed over 400 Meraki access points throughout the district. Those access points allow us to provide a Wi-Fi signal throughout every building. We've done a, we've worked with Meraki engineers and engineers from Air Corps to identify the buildings, map the buildings, and make sure that we're building the wireless network not only for today, but for five years out. So, we planned for, while we were installing and looking at these access points, we planned for a one-to-one initiative. So, we believe that we have the density and the access points in place to provide the coverage and the throughput that we're looking for as we add devices. Another discussion about infrastructure is that we've been working with our co-op for internet access, and we're in discussions and negotiations right now with different vendors to increase our throughput on the internet. Currently, we're at 100 megs up and down, and we're looking to eventually double that within the year. And then after that, we're looking, we're working with Ties right now to discuss a contract so that we can go to unlimited bandwidth, which that would be able to burst if we have a high demand, that it would burst on unlimited bandwidth. And we're in negotiations right now in regards to that infrastructure and our internet. The iPad deployment has been multi-staged, and what we have done is we made it a priority to get to the iPads to the teachers first. So, the first round of iPads went out this fall. We deployed over 500 iPads to all teaching staff. Those were deployed and in place by MEA break. The second round was 1,000 iPads into roughly 30 karts. And those karts were deployed, well configured, deployed, and in place by winter break. The high school and the middle schools have stuck with the cart model, which the karts have been available for checkout. The elementarys are doing something a little different where they broke those iPads out of karts, and they're actually deploying those per grade level. It seems to fit their needs quite nicely. As far as technical support, I have two gentlemen behind me that help. My whole team is in charge of supporting these iPads. We do use the Meraki MDM, which is Mobile Device Management Solution. Very exciting development with Apple. With iOS 7, we're allowed to, as long as every iPad's on iOS 7, we are able to purchase apps, push those apps out, and then revoke those apps if necessary. So, we retain ownership of all the apps that we now purchase district-wide. And the Apple VPP sites are talking and working in real time with the Meraki MDM in order to do that. So, it's a really nice solution, a nice fit for us to be able to purchase apps, push the apps out, and then pull them back if necessary. The only exception to that is books. Books, once you push out an app to an Apple ID, that Apple ID retains ownership of that book. Okay? That's what I had. I'll get out of the way.
So, as stated, we currently have, at the secondary level, we have 10 karts at the high school and five karts at each of the middle schools. That cart initiative has been going on and currently going on throughout the remainder this year, which has been going into the classrooms. Teachers are finding more and more unique ways to utilize those iPads on a daily basis, and we're finding great use of those. Those karts are in demand on a daily, weekly basis for a lot of the projects upcoming. For the one-to-one piece, we're looking at just eighth grade next year. We have, since we've made that decision, we have created a committee of eighth-grade teachers and some seventh-grade teachers as well. They're going to have a stake in this as well. We are meeting on a monthly basis right now to discuss what this is going to look like once we start deploying this next year. We really want to make sure that the teachers, we have all core subjects as part of this committee, as well as spectrum teachers and other specialists that would be dealing with the iPads. The committee, like I said, it meets on a monthly basis. We're talking about how we're going to have kids utilize these. What are the things that we need to consider as far as policies go, restrictions with the iPads, all those different elements that go into place when you think about a whole eighth-grade one-to-one piece? We've created a timeline. We started last month, and we're going to meet again at least once a month, starting, our next meeting is coming up on February 20th. We're really looking at other pieces that are important for the seventh-grade students, what are, which are our end users. What are the important elements that kids need to have in place for them to be successful with the iPads and to make sure that the teachers are comfortable using the iPads in the classroom? So, we want the teachers' input. We want students' input as well, so we'll be talking to them as well. And then we are starting to look at a policy within that so that parents understand the role of the iPad in the classroom, how that develop, or how that is going to educationally work with their kids so that they be, so that parents are more comfortable with the iPad at home. What are the expectations we have at school? And what are the expectations that parents have at home as well? So, we've also started to talk a little bit about staff technology professional development.
Yeah. So, with all this technology, there's a lot of learning to be done. First of all, we started with the staff, as we said, getting the iPads in the staff's hands, and I think the big thing is we're going from learning to use these tools to starting to using these tools to learn. And I think that's the big transition that we're trying to make with staff, starting with them, and as we slowly start to put them in the hands of students. The other big piece of integration is helping our students learn to use these. We're starting to create some courses on Schoology and have those courses focus for students on not only how to use the iPad, but the correct ways and appropriate ways to use them, some digital citizenship and some of those tools to make good choices with the iPad and use it for our benefits and for our education. The other piece is that we want to educate our families. So, that's going to include creating website resources so that parents know where to go when they have questions and when they want to help their students troubleshoot and use those devices the best they can, because what we're trying to do is open up our education to a 24/7 policy, anytime, anywhere, you can learn. So, we're going to be using Common Sense Media to help us with our digital citizenship alignment. We're using Schoology for an iPad Ninja course so that students can earn belts and badges as they learn more and more how to accomplish tasks with their iPad. And then, once again, the technology website will be available for parents, staff, students, and have technology-specific resources. The last piece is, as Corey and Marcus have both said, we've been working with large groups of teachers, students, and people to help make this possible between the iPad committee that Corey has started up at the middle school level, and then also we have a professional development committee that works really closely with some of our technology initiatives, who've put a lot of time and effort into decision-making and plans on how do we roll this project out. We'd like to also thank our administration, our school board, for helping support this program. We do believe this is the best interest of our students.
Are there any questions? Rich?
Marcus, you talked about infrastructure earlier. Is that hardware-related or is that provider-related?
Both.
Because I thought, don't we have access to fiber optic, you were fairly?
We do. And we are on a fiber optic land. Our sites are connected with a 10-gig pipe between buildings. But that pipe has to eventually get out to a router that gets out to the internet. And that's where that handshake takes place. So, we are, we still do have an internet service provider. Currently, it's Cogent, but that's, again, that cooperative that we belong to. It's made up by Shockbeak, New Craig, Bell Plain, ourselves, Jordan. That cooperative is splitting the internet bill right now, and we're in discussions with Ties to look at increasing our bandwidth on the internet side of things.
Do we have my new router?
No. It's leased equipment. And the reason why you lease it is so that it's E-rate eligible. So, it'd be, it would increase the internet bill that we receive, but not by a whole lot. And they're working through the numbers right now. So, it's just like if you're at home and you have a provider and you want to increase bandwidth, you can upgrade, but usually at a cost. And that's what we're working right now with various vendors. As part of the E-rate process, we did file a Form 470, which is like our request for proposal for internet services, and we do that annually. And only one vendor responded to our Form 470, and that was Ties. So, that's why we're in a conversation with Ties right now, saying, what can you do to provide faster internet for our district? Okay? You're welcome.
Stacy?
No. I hadn't asked this question before, and I don't know if it's been asked already, so if it has, I apologize, but are there any plans, once we have next year's eighth graders one-to-one, to look at redeploying any of the middle school iPads to other locations since, you know, they'll have perhaps not as, you know, much of a need, if you will?
Yeah, I think one of the things we anticipate as the eighth graders continue to use them, that the sixth and seventh-grade teachers are going to be demanding those iPads more often as we continue to prepare students for eighth grade. At this point, I think the only redeployment that we're thinking about, maybe a couple years down the road as they go into ninth grade, we may be looking at the high school situation as that evolves as well. But I certainly think that the sixth and seventh-grade teachers are going to be using them quite a bit, and I don't anticipate any reduction certainly in the amount of demand for that. So, I don't know that we redeploy or, we're going to continue to try to add more karts to the buildings if we can so that we can meet those needs of the sixth and seventh-grade teachers as well.
Okay.
And I like Mike, I'm not sure if I, this question's been asked before. Has there been discussion about at what point, at what grade level will be the lowest one-to-one initiative grade? Has there been discussion about that? And we're starting with eighth, working our way up. What, any discussions along those lines?
No, I think initially, the plan has been at eighth grade to have the insertion point from this point forward. I think we'll evaluate that as we go, as we go ahead, you know, to see how well it transpires, and then really to see what the demand looks like at the younger grades and then again at the older grades. But I think it's an evolving thing, but we know that the insertion point, at least for the near future, is going to be eighth grade.
That's something we work closely with, with those buildings, with our PD committee, and then report back to the board saying, this is how it's going. And if we see a need where we think maybe seventh grade or sixth grade are ready and able and willing, then we'd report that, ask, you know, make a recommendation.
Because moving forward, that's a, each grade is a huge cost difference. I mean, not having them on karts, and so it's something that we'd be interested in hearing about.
Great.
I have a question, and, well, actually, it's just a probe. With the bring your own device, how does that play into our deployment at eighth grade and actually for any grade?
Yeah, at this point, as we've been looking and talking about that, we certainly encourage people to continue to bring their own device. The problem is that when we, when we're using the MDM piece, it is iOS-specific. So, if a student brings in an Android device, which is certainly okay, the apps that are used, we cannot deploy those apps to those devices. And we can't assure that the availability of that app is going to be there in the Droid as well as the iOS that a teacher is using. We're not discouraging that by any means, but that may be a limitation. So, we would need to make sure that we have other elements in place so that those students could still have the same experience with that. But students can bring their own iOS device, Android devices as well.
One of the advantages to having and using a district own device is that we whitelist these devices, and they're on our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' network and not on the guest network. When you bring in your own device, you're relegated to the, unrelegated to the guest network, and the throughput and bandwidth are different on the two. Just something I wanted to point out.
Any other questions? I just have one. You talked about bandwidth. Have we hit any peak bandwidth moments in the high school, or were we hitting it?
Great question. Not yet. As part of this conversation that we've had with our cooperative and Ties is we were reviewing the numbers in our bandwidth utilization over the past year. And in July, all of the districts were peaking at 100 megs combined. This fall, we went to 200 megs, and I like to think we had something to do with that because we were deploying devices. And at winter break, it was peaking at 500 megs for all of the districts. So, they were seeing an increase, so that spurred the conversation of, we're not the only ones doing a one-to-one initiative. So, we, the cooperative and ourselves, want to make sure that we have enough bandwidth on the internet so if these devices are hitting DropGo Live or 360 Live or whatever internet-based services that we have the throughput on the internet side to make sure that those services flow. So, they are keeping track, and there's a trend, and it's going up. So, it's, it was one of the reasons why we filed for a Form 470 for increased bandwidth.
Marcus, might I just clarify? So, was it the group of us that applied for it or just Prior Lake Savage? I remember you pulled out of the co-op.
No, the cooperative is the partner. Yes.
So, it's not like we're seeking our own?
No.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our facilities update. Mr. Bellman?
Good evening. Chair Sorenson, school board, Dr. Grover. And with me this evening, Todd Richter from Nexus. We're going to give a brief update on projects, Group A projects. The high school is coming along. The weather might have slowed down the track a little bit, but we're in great shape. A lot of time to make up, and it's going, it's actually going very well. District Service Center, the boilers are in, the system is filled, we're circulating water, the ceilings are in, we're about 95% done here. Minus fresh paint job, we'll be painting next. And we should be able to wrap this system up. We are getting ready for Twin Oaks, and that's going to be a big, big project. And as part of my next presentations, we'll see, we're going to ask for some extra funding for some other projects. We're basically gutting that building, and it's a good opportunity to get some other work done at the same time. Turf fields are, are meeting tomorrow to finalize our plans for the turf. We're still waiting for review and comment from the state, and...
Due on the 20th?
On the 20th. Due on the 20th?
This month?
Of February, correct. Okay. And the remainder of the Group A projects is basically a lot of energy work. It'll be lights throughout the district, some controls work, and water efficiency. So, not counting the turf fields, high school, and Twin Oaks, Group A projects are really coming along and just about completed, so.
I know we had one of our board members out there working.
I'm sorry?
We had one of our board members out there working.
Yep.
He did a nice job.
Very good job.
No windows broken.
Are there any questions on the update?
Are we completely finished with Hidden Oaks and all the other preschools we did this summer?
For the mechanical systems, yes. Yep. There's some minor punch-les items yet that are very typical.
Cooling commissioning in the spring, too.
And cooling, thank you. And we have to make sure that the air conditioning is commissioned in the spring, but it's all operational.
Any other questions? Okay. Move on to Group B project funding.
You have before you a list of projects that, the bids came in for Twin Oaks very favorably. And so, we asked the building committee for permission to take down some projects for Twin Oaks and district that made sense. And those projects are in front of you, and I can go through them. The domestic water piping at Twin Oaks, we have the ceilings down now, is the time to do that. That pipe is rotting, just like it was at Hidden Oaks. And so, that's an excellent project. Some controls work at Twin Oaks. Again, the reasoning is that building is gutted, and now is the time to do it, to move it from Group B up to a Group A. In Twin Oaks, there's an air handler that's not providing enough air. Again, with this extra funding, we would like to tackle that and provide adequate air for the administrative area. And again, the building is gutted. We'd like to paint the interior of Twin Oaks. District ride, we have some roofing needs, and we're targeting a roof at Greenwood in the amount of $450,000. Fuel oil storage tank was a Group A project, was on an alternate for the first round at Hidden Oaks, and the budget came in too high, so we couldn't do it at that time. We're asking to do it now. And valves in Hidden Oaks in the administration office and part of the older building, control valves in the amount of $116,000. Again, that was an alternate that we had to take off because of the bids at Hidden Oaks.
And so, with the approval tonight, these will be put out for bid?
Correct. Actually, we're not dating these projects. We'll just execute these projects.
Just executing, okay. They have been bid.
Could we change orders to the contracts that you'd approved?
I have a motion, and this was Facilities Committee approved.
This was right, approved by the Facility Committee.
Okay. I have a motion to consider the, I guess, approve the recommendations to move forward with the following Group B projects. So... By Dan? Second. The motion. By Rich? Any questions? Sure.
So, with adding these all up together, would you still be under budget for the project?
Correct.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Thank you.
And finally, Twin Oaks bid award. We had bids on the 9th of January here at the District Service Center. We have bids to award, too. Black and Doe in the amount of $768,000. That's for the general conditions contract. For fire protection, Gorum Mechanical in the amount of $116,000. Plumbing and piping, Clam Mechanical Contractors, $1,358,500. Workscope Four, HVAC Ventilation and Test and Balance, it was a combined bid, to Thielin Heating and Roofing in the amount of $982,000. Electrical, it'll be a second bidder, and there'll be explanation on that, but to Phaser Electrical Company for $789,000. Building Automation is Yule Company in the amount of $343,000. And also attached is explanation that we recommend that Master Electric be allowed to retract their bid. Master Electric submitted an electrical bid of $580,000. During the qualifying process, Master claimed they made a judgment error and requested that their bid be disqualified. We reviewed Master Electric's supporting paperwork with the administration and the district's legal. And that would be our recommendation that we allow Master Auto...
Okay. I have a motion to accept the building improvements as listed. So, move. By Dan, second. By Stacy. Questions?
We have to reject the Master?
We have to reject, okay. Let's go ahead and do that first. I have a motion to reject the Master Electric bid for the, is that Twin Oaks?
For Twin Oaks, correct.
For Twin Oaks. By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Dan. Any questions about this and legal?
We have to reject this, or do we have to accept or withdraw?
We're just, we're just accepting the rejection of the bid.
I have to answer your question, Todd. Julie ran this through J-Square.
J-Square, okay. Any other questions? All those in favor of rejecting the bid for Master Electric?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. And we have a motion, a second, on the other 2014 building improvements for Twin Oaks. Any questions about those bids?
Phaser, yeah, Phaser Electric in place of Master Electric.
Oh, that's...
And with that, we had other bids?
Phaser and Master bid, and Phaser actually worked at Hidden Oaks last year. They're a very qualified contractor.
See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero.
Thank you.
And I guess just to note also, we're, from those bids, we're roughly $1.5 million under budget for that. I see the numbers here for me.
Yes. Overall, the project for Group A was $478,000. The contingencies were unspent now, so we filled that bucket back up. So, we were tight all along till this final bid opening.
Good. Sounds good. Thank you. I will move on to the resolution for open enrollment.
Each year at this time, we look at our enrollment numbers. We have to follow Minnesota statute, 124D.03, on enrollment options. And we have to look at the number of non-resident students that we can accept into our system. We've each year looked mostly at the high school, at Prior Lake High School. With the, with each year, we've looked at it depending on how much room there was. We've consulted with Principal Lund and worked together on what that number should be. With the opening of our wing, new wing next year, it will ease some of that congestion, a lot of that congestion, congestion actually. And Mr. Lund has met with the board in study session to talk about what that number could be, and we believe that 40 is the right number for this coming year. Currently, we have 32 students that have applied either as a freshman or a sophomore. Juniors and seniors can go to any high school they choose, so they don't really count, although there's only one in that category. But with 32 already applying, it would be nice to have those, that extra eight spots at this point, seeing that it's just February, so that for families that move in close to our district that would like to open enroll, we have that option come this summer. We always have families that do that in the summer and find that they would like to be part of our system. This would give us a little bit of extra room. So, my recommendation is to have 40 at the high school. As part of our demographic review this, this last few months, we talked about looking very carefully at Five Hawks and also at Redtail Ridge, because those are two hotspots for us as far as the growth due to construction in those areas. So, on page 74, you have the total number of open enrollment applications for our coming school year that we have at this time. And right now, the numbers at Five Hawks are seven open enrollments. We don't believe that that's going to be a problem. And at Redtail Ridge, there are 20 applications, which does not seem to be a problem at this time either. Their class sizes are very, very solid, very low actually, and this would be a nice section right there, and there is room. We will continue to, however, look at Five Hawks and at Redtail as we go into the fall. And if there should be some jumps or blips there, we will certainly bring that back to you, and we can close an elementary or grade level at any time because of our integration status. So, it doesn't have to all happen in January where it does with some districts. By statute, we can do that at any time of the year. So, there must be a resolution by the school board in order to limit the number of students coming to our district, and so I recommend at this time that we limit the number of high school, 9th and 10th graders at Prior Lake High School in 13, 14, 15 to be the number 40.
I have a motion to accept the resolution regarding the 2014... Do we have a motion to accept a resolution regarding the 2014-2015 open enrollment?
So moved.
By Lee, second.
Second.
By Dan. Any questions?
I see the Glendale.
Mm-hmm.
Any concerns there?
No. I, I checked with Principal Richardson and he feels they have space there and is, is fine with those numbers at this time.
Two additions, actually.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Mike?
Sue Ann, can you clarify again? So, is it because we're an integration district that non-resident agreements really are not in play for us? Or, because I always thought that there, like January was a timeframe for true open enrollments. Anything after that, that it was only for the, the actual following school year?
Right.
Is that still the case with, with these agreements that we're looking at now or is it different?
According to the statute, under subdivision four, if you're a desegregation district transfer, then you can do it at any time during the year. And it isn't limited to that January 15th the way it used to be.
Okay.
So, it can happen at any time. What we're saying is that we'd like to close the high school for next fall at, with the number 40, knowing that that would be a night, a good number for us, but not too many that would, would increase class size overall. At that point, we would close it for open enrollment. And we have that ability to do that by statute.
But I guess that, so if somebody were to come in next week that doesn't reside in the district and say they wanted to go to Five Hawks, they would come in as an open enrolled family or as a non-resident agreement?
Oh, it's, it's all, for us, it's all open enrollment.
Okay. So, once they are accepted, then they, they're here for permanent?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Chad?
Aye.
Rich? Aye. Lee?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aye. Dan?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
That carries seven zero. I'll move on to, as I say it. We have no policy tonight. Correct?
That's right.
Okay.
We got a lot of policies.
Yeah. Superintendent's report.
Yes. Earlier this year, I reported that I visited with the Prior Lake Chamber. This coming week, actually tomorrow, I'll be visiting with the Savage Chamber. I'll be a guest speaker along with Burnsville Superintendent. And we will share what's cool in our schools. And I'm very excited about this opportunity to share all the good things that are going on with our, our schools, with our staff, with our students, and look forward to having the interaction with our community and letting them know how great we really are. School closings, I've had very positive feedback from our community regarding our January tundra, frozen tundra that we experienced. We will continue to reserve March 20th, which is currently an early release date, and April 18th as, which is currently a professional development date as potential makeup day should we have to close schools again. I, I do watch the weather closely, as you might imagine, and I'm sure you do also. And we, we do believe there's a warm-up coming. So, we're very excited about that. We just hope it doesn't bring too much snow with it. But at this point, we're optimistic guardedly. And we'll continue to keep our community informed as we make these decisions as best we can. Our fab lab, we're continuing looking at our fabrication lab as being a go for next fall. Recently, Representative Tony Albright, Senator Eric Pratt, and representatives from the University of Minnesota met with our school board chair, Todd Sorensen, Jeff Holmberg, Principal Lund and myself about our plans for our lab and potential collaboration between our two groups. That was followed up by a second meeting where members of the team came over here with some interns that they will be using. And the visits will continue throughout February, looking for those ways that we might collaborate together so that we might work smarter, if you will, in order to prepare our students for that post-secondary opportunity that is yet to be determined. And hopefully, provide an excellent experience for those students as well. So, we're looking forward to having that, that work continue. I wanted to tell you, in case you hadn't read in the paper, that sixth grade students in our middle schools created an app called the Central App and it won first place in the Verizon's Innovation, Innovative App Challenge. And I'll move on to the national level. So, how exciting is that? Students tried to figure out, they had to figure out an app that was useful to them. So, they came up with Central App, which is a way for them to take all of the different applications that they're using in school and out of school and put them in one place. So, they have developed that in working with their teachers in order to come up with this and get the applications filled out. And they've just done a fabulous job. So, congratulations to Max DeVoe and Ryan Fuller for their instigation of that. And then I just received a message this morning from Commissioner Brenda Casilius letting us know that our district is on track to meet the 2017 goal of reducing the achievement gap by 50%. We are on one of, only 39% of the district statewide have received this on-track letter in math and 43% in reading, and we are in both of those groups. So, our teachers and our administrators are doing a fabulous job of staying true to making sure that our students are reading by third grade, that are functioning high, highly on these tests that, that state is providing for us, and that we're demonstrating that our students are doing quite well. So, I'm very excited about that. And with that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Administrator reports.
Good evening. Over the past several months, I just have a brief update about the boardroom here and the electronics. Over the past several months, we've been having some issues with our current electronic system. It was noted at our last boardwork session that there's times when things happening at home, the voice and sound isn't coming through as, as well as the, the ability to live stream. We've been having several discussions about that moving forward with reaching out to vendors. We, we've had some conversations with several contractors to come in and look at the boardroom. It's been kind of an interesting process. At, at, at that stage, largely the ceiling wasn't intact here and a lot of the technology equipment was taken down. But Mr. Malazo and I are working on reaching out, meeting with several vendors. The board does have a technology board reps. That would be Mr. Murray and Mr. Rittenhour. What our next step would, would be is we would complete that quote process, meet with both of them and share the findings of what we found as well as the quotes. And then move forward to the next boardwork session or an upcoming boardwork session to provide an overview of findings and costs. And then pending that process, we would take it forward to the board, formal board reading or board meeting to present the overview of the project and the cost and then seek board approval to move forward. So, we've got equipment that, that's quite senior. And we're having some, some issues making sure that we can deliver on, that we're live streaming it and people at home watching it on computer are actually hearing what I'm saying right now. So, we want to make sure that, that we, we look at that and make sure we address it promptly.
Thank you. Matt, Rich, Julie? I'll move on to board reports. Seeing none, student council report.
It's going to be busy next two weeks. On Wednesday, we are having coronation at 7 o'clock. Thursday, we have a division conference at Farmington High School. And then immediately are going to feed our children. And the next week is snowball week, so we have just spirit days and dodgeball tournament, dance, the whole works. So, pretty busy time at this point. So, yeah.
Very good. Thanks. Just a couple of future events. We have No School on Presidents' Day, February 17th. The Daddy Daughter Dance, February 22nd at 6:30 in the evening. And the board study session, the 24th at 6:00 PM here at the District Service Center. Do we have anything else to be brought forward? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the meeting?
Adhere?
Adhere the meeting.
Let's adjourn.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
By Lee, second. By Stacy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, that carries seven zero, thanks.